Go ahead and call our meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order, if we would. I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'd ask Pastor Dave Sivert, 7, to say the invocation, please.
Goodness Lord, we ask you to bless this, these Allegheny County Supervisors as they get ready for business this evening. Bring to each of them your wisdom to make the right decision for the betterment of the people of Allegheny County. Help them to discern each issue with the care and the love that you have shown each of your children. Help them to trust you for generous wisdom, straight paths, and peaceful hearts. They will plan but will trust you to order their steps. And let them perceive and always understand thing by God's Spirit and to judge wisely. Do no harm and do only good as each of you are guided by your own Spirit. We ask all of this, dear God, in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I trust everybody has looked over the minutes of the previous meetings for 3:01, 3:15, 3:29, and 4:05, and the work session for April 5th.
Mr. Chairman, I have no questions. We'll make a motion that we accept.
A second.
The motion's second. All in favor, raise your hand. At this time, we'll open up public comment. If there's any citizen would like to address the board, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I ask one question.
Yes, sir.
I may have got caught, but did we approve the agenda?
We did not.
No, we did not. Excuse me.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion to approve the agenda. I hear a second. And a second. All in favor, raise your hand. 4-0. My apologies, overlooked that.
Just to get started.
Yeah, there you go. Now, public comment, please. You would state your name and...
My name is Ann Simons, daughter of Leland and Sharon Simons, granddaughter to Lenora Simons, niece to Lenora Joyce, and cousin to many who have had homes and have homes in the county for decades. My mom and dad first moved here in 1955, worked a farm, and volunteered for the park service. They retired here in 1982. Dad was a trustee of the Sparta Methodist Church. Mom started Sharon's Sewing Circle. Mom was the first director of the Allegheny Chamber of Commerce here. Dad chopped wood for the elderly and infirm. They volunteered at Cares, made cider from their press every mountain heritage festival, and are buried in the columbarium at the Methodist Church. After working 30 years as a waitress serving people at Disney and David serving his community for 25 years as battalion chief for the fire department, we followed in mom and dad's footsteps and now live two houses down from grandma's house. I ask you to put yourselves tonight in our place. If the situation all described were happening to you, your family, your wife, or children, what solution you might find to solve this problem? You buy a lovely little farmhouse on one acre with three acres across the street surrounded by farmland and mountains. You spend money, time, hard work, and planning to ready the home to market as a business vacation rental for income to help pay for the loan on the house. While spending time working at the home, you immediately discover the neighbor a quarter-mile away blasts his music day and night to where you can even feel and hear it inside the house. You can't enjoy anywhere on the property. You ask this person several times to please turn it down so you can't hear it, but he won't. You finally call the police and they can't do anything. You are forced to unlist your home for rental and can't produce the income needed to pay for the loan. When you drive up to your house, he turns the music up. He roars loudly at you. He comes onto your property across the street and stares at the house. He antagonizes and denigrates you. His family seems to condone his behavior and even held target practice onto your property while you were there alone. So you buy a decibel meter to record the noise, thinking, "This can't be illegal," or "This can't be legal." In recording in front of his home, you are confronted and threatened with, "I'm gonna get you, girl." You feel targeted by this man and his family. You now don't feel safe visiting your property. This stress is affecting your health. You're not given the right every citizen should, the peaceful, safe, and quiet enjoyment of their homes. The Raleigh definition of unnecessary noise is defined as any excessive or unusually loud sound or any sound which disturbs the peace and quiet of any neighborhood or which does annoy, disturb, injure, or endanger the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of reasonable persons or causes damage to property or business. I ask if you or your family had to suffer the injustice of the constant noise nuisance, threat of bodily harm, and major financial loss, what would you do? You would go in front of your elected county commissioners and ask for help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
David Morris, I'm going to speak on the same subject. My purpose tonight is to request the county to begin the process of adopting a noise ordinance. On June 10th, we closed on a house at 611 Stratford Road. The intent of this purchase was to create an Airbnb-style vacation home. After the closing, we started work on the house. The music from next door was one-quarter mile away, was extremely loud. The next day, the music was at the same level with the bass thumping through the house. You can understand every word to all the songs. A neighbor stopped by and I asked about the music. He stated, "Get used to it. It's like this every day, all day." We've all asked him to turn it down, but he doesn't. Ann and I talked to him. Ann talked to him. I talked to him. We talked to him together. We tried being nice, reasonable, and neighborly. No more. 12 days ago, I finally called the sheriff's department. They responded, but the music continued while they were there and after they left and every day as of yesterday. I will now call the sheriff daily if need be. We already had a booking for 35 days starting this July 11th. We had to inform our guests of the ongoing problem. They canceled the booking. The cancellation cost us personally $4,500. I'll let you calculate the county costs and taxes, trips to Food Lion, restaurants, downtown shopping, fuel, and other activities. We've stopped listing the house on any rental sites, creating an unknown loss of income for us and ourself, the local businesses. Sorry. I purchased a decibel meter, having taken numerous readings on numerous days around our property. I use Google Earth for the distance measurements to the offender's property. The average decibel measurement in the yard, front patio, and rear patio is 52 decibels, four football lengths away. Inside living room and upstairs bedroom with only one window open, average 51 decibels, four football lengths away. We all know how long a football field is, right? We also own the field across the street, as Ann stated. From the middle of that field, it goes up to 53 decibels, three football fields away. The closest corner to the offender's property is up to 55 decibels, two football fields away. One decibel increase is a 10% increase in audible noise. A 10% 10-decibel increase is audible noise twice as loud as it was 10 less. We fully expect noise from farm equipment, constructions, get-togethers, parties. But there's no peace anywhere at any time on our property. We can't rent the house in current situations. I don't believe we could ever sell it without a massive loss if we could sell it at all. All these problems because one individual refuses to be a reasonable human being. Ann will not go to the house by herself due to threats to her by this offender, which we have on recording. We're requesting help from our county officials to help solve this heinous situation. I will work with you and give you any recorded documentation you need tomorrow and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Anyone else?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nick Hall. I'm the chief deputy, Allegheny County Sheriff's Office. I would just like to say that there has been certainly a lot of calls to this residence in this area that they're speaking of. We have charged this individual with several unrelated offenses to the noise. We all know that there's no noise ordinance in Allegheny County. We went, because it has became such a problem and because we've not found a solution to get him to turn his music down, we reached out to our district attorney's office. Our patrol lieutenant in weeks past reached out and asked about an old common law, which is breach of peace. And we were denied that because the county does not have an ordinance in place. So the vast majority of the citizens in this county, we've answered noise complaints since I started in 2001, and it's been 20 years ago. I can remember going out to people's homes. People would be complaining that someone had their music turned up. We would go out and we would ask these individuals to turn their music down. They would comply. We've run across a situation here where we're not getting much compliance, but we have tried to do everything within our power to get this under control. But there's just, there's just not a charge or an ordinance there to take care of this solution. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the comments. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and move on down to the TDA quarterly report.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I believe you had an individual stand up over here.
Sorry. I didn't see you, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, sir. I didn't see it. My apologies.
All right. Thank you. My apologies. Just briefly, I wanted to introduce myself. Zach Shepard with Via Health. I'm going to be covering Allegheny County as part of my coverage area from here on out. And I just wanted to put it out there, I have contact information for anyone who needs to get in touch with me, be happy to help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have your business card that you could leave with us tonight, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Travel safely.
Okay.
Could, Mr. Chairman, if I may, could I ask a question about public comments? The situation that's been described, no, I think everybody knows the individual, but I think especially with Via Health being here tonight, this is more of a mental problem from times gone by with this individual. And I just wonder if the sheriff's department has any recourse but to go through somebody like Department of Social Services, Via Health, somebody along that line to help these people? It's just a question. I don't know if it's a possibility or not. Thank you.
We can certainly check into it and see. Thank you. Okay. TDA, Mr. Steve Mason. Thank you.
So just want to, Steve Mason from the TDA. I just wanted to go over a couple of quick things in regards to just a quick overview. The information there at the top of the page, the, basically from the reductions that we incurred in the fourth quarter of last year, and this started just at the first initial part of the second, first quarter of this year, really, there was a considerable increase from that point on throughout the rest of, the rest of the year. And we're seeing between Airbnb and the hotel here in town and just the frequency of stays and the number of stays has just exploded. And so what we're seeing there, when you look at Exhibit A and look at those numbers, the 2020 audited fund balance currently stands for the revenues for this year is $156,000. Now, our original budget was, if you remember, if you go back to our first quarter analysis, was right around $80,000. So we have progressed a considerable amount of money in regards to the, to the stays that have occurred in the county over the last three or four months especially. But really, you see it throughout the whole year. Expense-wise, it was $48,483. There's no outstanding grants currently right now and no obligations of outstanding expenses. Long range plan, just want to touch on that just real quick. We had a balance from last year of $18,000, and we were progressively putting $6,000 in each, each year as a base number. Well, if you look there, we actually put $26,000 in there. So we put additional $20,000 in there and two incremental $10,000 allotments, which give us $44,000, knowing that we'd be about the $50,000 mark coming into this year. So that gives us a pretty good amount of money to work with for a major project as we go along. And I think those numbers will continue to progress the same way they're going as far as the month-to-month use, usage. The Exhibit, Exhibit A is just that piece that shows that fund balance and how that works right down to the base balance of 114, 528. Exhibit B is just a breakdown of our administration, chamber administration fees and then expenses, and then our grants themselves, which we had $23,893 in grants given this year. That number is low for a typical year for us and what we had allotted for our allocations for this year, but at the same time, it was predicated by the COVID-19 and kind of what was going on. When you go to the next page, on page two, you can see where our funds for expenditures was 46,328. That is a difference from a transfer fund, which takes you back to the original number of 48,000 by a $2,500 transfer that was made for the audit. And that was done just before the month ended. So, and then just Exhibit C being our expenditures and revenues, 156 and 48,000. And then the last exhibit on there is, is our revenues by month. And as you can see, as those months progress, especially in August at 22,000, again in October at 21,000, those numbers were pretty substantial. And then in May, backed up to 15,000. So currently, right now, we have, we don't have any grants that are working, but we will be receiving some grant. We have one grant application in the pipeline, and we will be pursuing some most assuredly as we kind of work together with the fairgrounds and trying to push and promote the fairgrounds.
Any comments?
I do have some questions.
Yes, sir.
On your grants, on the notice of the grant for $5,000 and $6,000. That's rather substantial during the period of COVID-19. Could you fill in what we're looking at right there?
Sure. The $6,000 incremental one for the chamber, that was for some publications and advertisement for promotions in the county. And then the $5,000 to Recreation Department, which is for the signage that's being promoted there at the, for the front of the fairgrounds.
That's the electric sign going up in the fairgrounds.
That's correct. Yep.
Correct. Okay. See, only questions I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Sure.
Steve, do you have a, just a minute to give us some examples of who you give grants to and for what?
Sure. I mean, basically, we will entertain anyone who presents a grant application. A grant application can be pursued online or through contact with the TDA directly, but we have an online application form that's on our website, AlleghenyTDA.com. And if they go to that site, they can go right down the line and go into an application form, which gives you the breakdown of how and what the criteria is for that. We basically, we will be initiating a plan this year to start promoting and being more aggressive about advertising that information and getting it out and promoting that information so we can get more interest in regards to pursuing those. The Arts Council, the Music on Main programs, the fairgrounds, we did, we did a couple this past, previous year before COVID, we helped with the rodeo, the Fiber Fest, some of those different, we're broadening in the scope of what's, what we're getting involved in and want to continue to broaden that.
How long does it take to get a grant approved?
All we ask is that that grant application comes in two weeks prior to our current meeting that we have scheduled. And then we try to manage that and address that particular grant and then ask that individual if they would come in and present that grant. They don't have to do that, but that is a benefit to them to do that. And then we go by the application form and what's, what's presented in the application and address it by the board.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Squad impressive, Steve. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I would point out that whenever they give out the grants, the statute that established the TDA is very specific, the areas that these grants can go to.
That's correct.
It's not going to be just anything. It's got to be tourism-related.
Related, sure. And then the other thing that we've, make sure that we do is a follow-up on that backside of having an evaluation on that particular event so that we know that where that event stood, what, what kind of opportunities we have in the future to help with that event in the future and that type of thing, too.
John, we certainly appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. General business, fire ground internet.
Long time no see. RFP is just like it was previously. I will apologize. The time was not put on the copy that you have, probably. Mr. Carter brought that to light, and it has since been fixed. So the date will stay the same, July 30th, with an end time of 3:00 PM and an opening time of 3:01 PM.
So, we need a motion.
Where will it be advertised? We're going to have it in the paper on the website?
It will be in the paper and on the website.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman, and I will make a motion that we approve.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up's line item transfer. Ms. April Hand.
Good evening.
Evening.
You had in your packet a line item transfer for the transfer facility. All this is within the proprietary fund of the transfer facility, and it's to pay the vendor for the disposal fees, foothills. Any questions that I can answer about the line item transfer?
Order.
Just to clarify for the board, we ran a few reports today just to support this. Board remembers back since the earthquake has happened. To date, we're just shy of $21,000 of debris that's been brought in at no charge. So that constitutes the majority of this transfer for that disposal cost. Just for grins, it's just shy of 325 tons. It's coming across that scale at this point. What I will also say is in closing out this fund for the current fiscal year, we've, we've had some good opportunities. It looks like we're going to finish okay with that. There are some remaining expenditures that will come in just by timing of invoices. But I'm happy to say that that, that fund is adequate at this point for the closing of the year. So this, this transfer is certainly something that is available and has the funding to do so for your consideration.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the line item transfer.
Bobby makes a motion to approve the transfer. Michelle, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on down, county manager's comments.
Hey, in your packet, you have the June building inspection report. There's some good information there. I'd ask that you read and look that over. I have two other items. I'll start with the good one and I'll end with the bad one. We now have a signed agreement with Tecta America for the replacement roof on the courthouse. And I have asked for them, for the engineering group, REI, to provide me with a timeframe both on the work to be formed, to be performed, and the materials, because as we all know, materials are, are an item that's backorder at this point for certain things. So they will be providing that. The initial thought was somewhere between three and four months from completion, receiving of materials, et cetera. So once I have that firmed up, I'll certainly identify that. One other item, just as a note, we discussed this before, but we do have a machine down at the transfer facility again. And we are working with, with the holiday schedules and vacations that have occurred. We're trying to line up the appropriate discussions to occur. But I do want you to know that we do, again, have a machine down at that facility. Our backup is working at its capacity. We will continue to work on that as well. That, those are the only comments I have this afternoon.
Thank you, sir. Moving on down, county commissioner comments. Mr. John.
Well, I hope everyone had a good Fourth of July. Well, I hope everyone had a good Fourth of July. It, I never thought that I would live to see the day where people questioned the Fourth of July, but now it is. It is disheartening to know that the flag that I served under for 26 years, service in Vietnam and the Persian Gulf, is now causing problems. I hope to be buried under it one day, but never thought it would cause a problem. And apparently, my white privilege is just getting buried under it. Jesus, Mary, and Joseph. One of the things we do need to do, Mr. Chairman, we need to discuss sometime in the future, the land at San Brown's Mountain. Just to let the public know that there is a question about ownership on that property. I suggest that we turn it over to our learned attorney and see what we can do about it. Unless the county manager has something else that he would like to cover?
That is already in the works.
Very well. That is all that I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Michelle.
I'm sure that my fellow commissioners have received a lot of messages and calls about the swimming pool as I have. And please know that we did not close the pool without a lot of thought and a lot of discussion about what bad state that it's in. And, you know, we just cannot go throwing good money after bad money. When you've got a situation where you have a building that's separated from the roof, where you have the whole pool liner that's cracked by the earthquake, you know, I just, I just encourage everyone to, let's work together to get an even better facility. That facility was not ADA compliant, and I think it's time to move on and try to, try to get something that's even better for our citizens. So, please know that we are talking about that, and that is, that is in the long-range goal. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Bobby.
Just a few things. One thing to start with, I think the last meeting, I mentioned that the brick sale is ready to start back up. And I've, I think Michael has asked Heather of her opinion about is it legal to go ahead and start selling the bricks so we can let our Veterans Service Officer know that it's time to get going, and we should relay Heather's response to the Veterans Committee, Advisory Committee also. Heather?
I didn't see any issue with it. When I went to the website, that the company that produces the bricks and prints the actual seals for the different branches of our military service, the, they've certified themselves publicly that they are the only authorized company to be able to use those seals. So, I would be, they don't have any other legal documentation for it. However, they are publicly advertising that. If they did not have the authority to do it, I would be very concerned that they were publicly on the World Wide Web stating that they were the only company that had that. I'm sure at this point, their advertisement would have led to litigation of some kind or a cease and desist if they did not have the authority from proper authorities to be able to do that. So, and we are not directly contracting with them for the county. The individuals are contracting with that company in order to produce those bricks, the printing and what's on that brick. So, we aren't entangling ourselves with the, the production or use of any, any seals or logos. That is directly between the company and the individual that is contracting with them. So, I feel confident that we don't have an issue with that being passed along.
So, you would recommend that we go ahead and start?
Absolutely.
Thank you. The other thing is, is talking about the noise ordinance. I think Michelle and for others that, for Bill, that about three years ago, we tried with the noise ordinance along with the new, with usage ordinance, and that was one of the biggest concerns, I think, that the citizens of the county had, that, that we had no business doing that. I don't know if we can break it out and do a separate noise ordinance, but there again, I feel for the people. I think we all know the individual. That's why I asked if this could not be a mental health issue. I've known him for years and years, and there's times that he's the best of people, and there's times that you wouldn't dare turn your back on him. So, I feel for him, and I hope something can come of it. I'd like to thank our, I was excited to have the prayer tonight. I was glad that was put back on the agenda, and I look forward to that continuing under the process that we are. I think that, from everything I understood, that keeps us legal. There again, it was disheartening for one person to stop the county government from being able to express their views, but I do, I'm glad that it happened tonight. And I'd like to thank the people that were in the parade, people that watched the parade, and people that put on the parade. For years, I've seen parades except for last year, and this was, I think, one of the biggest and probably one of the best that we've had in a long time. That's all, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you. I thank you guys. It's covered about all the bases. I just, the Fourth was a beautiful weekend. The weather was great. Music on Main was a huge success. The parade, like Bobby says, was the biggest and the longest that I've remembered in many, many years. And I'd just like to thank the chamber and all those involved with pulling all that off. I know there's several people involved with, with that, and they worked hard, and it was a huge success. And most of all, I'd like to thank all the citizens for coming out and enjoying and taking it all in. That's, that's what made it all come together, made it all work. It was a very nice weekend, and I hope everybody enjoyed their Fourth. In the pool, as Michelle said, we're working on other things, and we all hate to see that pool close. It's been there since back in the 70s, and all of us as kids, grandkids, has played in that pool, but everything wears out and everything comes and goes sometime or the other. But we are working on other stuff for the, for the kids and so forth to have in the pool. So, with that being said, anybody have any, Michelle, do you have any other further comments? Or Heather, excuse me?
No, I don't.
Michael? If not, we'll call this meeting recessed.
No, we need to go in, close.
I'm fixing to. Call this meeting recessed, and we have requests for a closed session under General Statute 143-318.11.A/6 personnel, and April being cleared on that. Is that good?
Bob?
I'm not good.
We got to move? We got a second? We're good?